Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I call this meeting of the informational of Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 to order. First, we're going to start with an operations committee report. Our vice chair, Councilor Sale, who is the chair of the committee, is gone today, so I'm just going to cover that really quick. We talked about city logo wear, specifically providing a small stipend for our staff and for council so that they can get logo wear that hasn't been in existence, at least for staff in the past, and seemed like a reasonable thing to do. Councilor Erickson presented a draft ordinance regarding council committees. It would essentially change committees so that we could send an item to a committee for further study versus having standing committees that would be meeting weekly, which we haven't been doing recently anyway. There was also a discussion about the consent agenda, that there would be a procedure put in place to give the administration and counselors more notice if somebody intends to pull something from the consent agenda, so that administration has time to be present, and all counselors will have the same information, just a matter of, I guess, just being respectful and transparent. And then there was just a few other discussions we had, and then there was national citizen survey. We're going to move forward with that as we usually do, and that was about all we had. It was a very good meeting. So with that, we will move on to CCOG, Southeastern Council of Governments. Do we have Councilmember Breckie or Starr on the phone that would be prepared to make that presentation?
I thought, is Councilmember Starr there? He was going to make the presentation. I was unable to attend the meeting.
Okay, he is not, so we can just push that to the, to next week. Thank you. Metro Management Council, report on that meeting. Councilor Kylie or Erickson, would you be prepared to speak to that?
Sure, I can speak to that briefly. The primary item on our agenda was the discussion and consent to the Joint Public Safety Answering Point, or PESAP, agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County. And actually, we're going to be dealing with this item later this evening, too. But the city contribution boils down to 7.85 million, which involves the construction of the PESAP and also the construction of the communications tower and UPS backup. County contribution would be 2.15 million, and that would be due, not due until 2022, or at the opening of the, of the facility. Basically, they're covering the FFE, the furnitures, the fixtures and the equipment to, to the amount of 2.1 million, including an $83,000 contingency. Reduce the lease for the PESAP backup to 27.5,000 annually through 2023 to 2032 for a 10-year period. By reducing that lease to us, the city, that brings us back to that 75%, 25% split between city and county. So, as I've mentioned, we will be addressing this in more detail this evening as well, too. And then we had an executive session following that, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kylie. The last committee report is Sulan Heritage Museum Board. That is something Councilmember Starr is a member of, and he is not with us today, so we're going to move on to city council open discussion. Any open discussion? Not seeing any. We'll move on to presentations. First is the update on City of Sioux Falls CARES Act funding, presented by our Director of Finance, Sean Pritchett. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. Appreciate the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about the CARES Act. I'm going to give, just start with a quick overview and a little bit of the history, but the CARES Act dates back to March 27th, when it was signed into law. Now, when we say CARES Act, there's a lot of pieces of the CARES Act. There's the stimulus pieces, there was the payments to individuals, there was the payments to unemployment, there was a variety, many, many different grant programs that were allocated as part of the CARES Act. So, when we're talking about the CARES Act tonight, we're talking about the portion that relates to the state and local government assistance portion. And of that amount, the federal government had allocated and granted to the state of South Dakota $1.25 billion for economic recovery and pandemic response. That was the base minimum that a state could receive, and on a per capita basis, South Dakota received probably about three to four times what our maybe more populated states received. So it was a fairly significant sum of money. On June 20th, Governor Noem announced that she would take $200 million of that to utilize toward local government assistance initiative. With the CARES Act, there were certain entitlement communities that received direct funding, but you had to have a population of 500,000 or more. So it was the intent of Congress, and that was further delineated in some of the guidance, their expectation that the states would act as the go-between for those funding, for those counties, municipalities that didn't receive direct funding. So again, on June 20th, Governor Noem did announce the $200 million initiative, and allocated up to 41.5 million approximately. It's actually $41,551,151 for the city of Sioux Falls. So that was the maximum that the city of Sioux Falls would be eligible to receive, but it requires eligible expenses to be able to access those fundings. On June 23rd, we did our initial briefing to the council that was done during the May monthly financial report shortly after that announcement received, and as we were gathering additional information. And then on July 7th, the city council authorized a sub-grant recipient agreement be authored, be signed between the city of Sioux Falls and the state of South Dakota to essentially access this funding. Just to kind of give you a little other background, so the planning and development districts, they have been contracted by the state of South Dakota to serve as a technical assistance organization, so most of our questions that we have related to this flow through there, so they're providing technical assistance, but the funding is not flowing through the planning districts. The state established an online portal, and that's where we submit our eligible expenses for reimbursement. The state also retained Aid Bailey to review the expenses and the drawdown documentation, so they are not authorizing the disbursement of funds, but rather just ensuring that appropriate documentation has been submitted to, to sufficiently prove eligibility of those expenses. But final authorization of those reimbursements is done by the state of South Dakota itself. So over time, there's been a series of guidance that has been issued. Early on, the Department of Treasury issued guidance, and they have been continually updating that, and that is from a global perspective, just in terms of the overall state, what the states and eligible local governments could utilize these funding for. The state itself issued its own guidance, a slightly trimmed-down version of what the federal guidance had prescribed, and really focusing on, on specific core areas that were related to the municipal governments or the county governments themselves. As recently as August 28th, the Department of Treasury's Office of the Inspector General has also weighed in now and issued its own somewhat clarifying guidance, which in many respects, or at least in some respects, is contradictory to the original guidance that had been issued by the Department of Treasury. And that's where things get a little bit, you might say gray, in terms of this grant funding source. So it was introduced very quickly with minimal amount of guidance provided. So they tried to issue as much guidance as possible, but within many things that were as part of this legislation, there wasn't a lot of time to write things up that weren't specifically prescribed. The, the legislation itself was really broad, and there wasn't time to kind of go through and, and create all these rules regarding these grant programs that you see in grant programs that have been around for many, many years. And so with that, there is some inherent risk in accessing the funds that we just have to be cognizant of, and I'll talk a little bit more here as we kind of go through this presentation. But, so they've issued guidance, but there is, as I said, some additional risks that's associated with the receipt of these funds, because ultimately, what is in the guidance and what is in the legislation is if they send auditors in and they determine that they don't feel like the, the expenses for which you were reimbursed were eligible, they have the right to revoke the funding, and they'll come first at the state. And the agreement between us as a sub-recipient of the state is essentially that if the, if they come back to the state and try to receive back funds that we received, that we would end up having to repay it back to the state ourselves, or the state of South Dakota has the right to withhold funding from us. And that's a key provision, and that could be future grants that are given to us, and it's broad enough written that it could even be perhaps our sales tax receipts. So keeping in mind that they, they have a pretty big hammer in which to enforce that mechanism, we had, we just have to be cognizant of that. The, the OIG's guidance that was issued, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, but as I said, it was a little bit contradictory to some of the guidance that has been given out by the Department of Treasury. We have reviewed this, we've had some discussions with the state over the last week about this, and essentially, they continue to rely on the original guidance that has been prescribed by the Department of Treasury initially. Not that we shouldn't be cognizant, I guess, of the OIG's opinions, but apparently, they have issued contradictory opinions on several other provisions within the CARES Act, and so you're just seeing two different sides of a department somewhat having different viewpoints. Not entirely different viewpoints, but some different viewpoints nonetheless, and, and I'll talk about that here a bit more. But the main things related to the, this potential funding source is that expenditures needed to have been incurred between March 1st and December 30th of this year. At this time, that has not been extended any further. I think there's been some push, even discussion with the state of South Dakota about wishing that that funding would be kind of extended into next year, but at this time, we're under, operating under the assumption that it has to be incurred within this year. It generally says it cannot be included, the eligible expenses cannot be included in your approved budget, your original approved budget, but there are some exceptions, and the biggest exception here is the idea of if the funding was substantially different. We've talked about this in some of the prior, my prior presentations, but essentially, they're saying if, if the funding was allocated, say it was for payroll, but that person was doing something substantially different because of the public health emergency, then that potentially could be qualified. Then they go on to say that for administrative simplicity, you can assume that public safety, public health, personnel are substantially dedicated from an administrative perspective. And this is where some of the differences are occurring between the OIG's office and the Department of Treasury, because essentially, we're, we were operating under the assumption of the substantially dedicated, and from the guidance from the state, that meant that both police personnel as well as fire personnel costs were all eligible for reimbursement. And this represents a fairly significant amount for us, and gives us a broad capacity in which to draw down most, if not all, of our allocation. So that's the operation we've had. What the OIG's office has come in and stated is, yes, you can assume them, I guess, assume them to be substantially dedicated, but we also want you to verify that and document it in your files. So that, that's a little bit of a, a different spin on it, and so the position, we've talked with the state again, is that they're relying on the original guidance issued by Treasury. We continue to do what we can to substantiate it in our files, but as far as risk is concerned in relation to these, we just have to be cognizant of the, that there could be a, a situation where we'd have to repay some of these funds if you had an auditor who had a difference of opinion. So we'll continue to make the case and document our files accordingly, but we just have to be cognizant, I guess, of that risk factor that's involved there. Eligible expenses, personal protective equipment, isolation and recovery centers. So we did have a recovery center that we operated for about 45 days in this community, but we actually funded that with another grant opportunity called ESG, which is, I think, also funded through CARES, but we're not taking it through the state and local government assistance. Public health, personnel, less revenue offsets, and then, as I noted, public safety payrolls. That includes police, fire, and then our Metro 911 contribution. Cleaning supplies, equipment and software that supports remote work, and a number of miscellaneous other eligible expenses. So our focus has been primarily on the public safety payroll component, because it is certainly the most significant area that we can re, get reimbursed for. We've actually held back on certain areas, like we have spent, I think, $400,000 or $500,000 in PPE. We've held back that expense from being submitted in this, cleaning supplies, things of that, because there, we have an opportunity to potentially, if we already get our maximum through the, this local assistance program, we could take that over to FEMA and have it 75% reimbursed. So we are trying to maximize the different reimbursement mechanism we may have. With this grant, it is typically, it, it's like many other federal grants, we have to treat it very similar. We have single audit requirements that are as part of that. About, I'd say maybe four weeks ago, five weeks ago, we submitted our first payroll. It was about a million and a half dollars, and it was kind of our test payroll to see, we got all the kinks worked out and so forth. With that one, we just had a few glitches, and then it went through very quickly with the state, so then we submitted everything, all of our expenses from March all the way through July. And so in total, to date, in August, and you'll see this in the August financials later in the month, we have received about $21.5 million reimbursed from the state to this point. We do expect that we could draw our entire allocation by about mid-November of this year, so we'll continue to make monthly draws on this going forward. And like I said, most of our submissions have been primarily related to the public safety payroll, as well as the Metro 911 contributions, and we are holding some of those expenses for FEMA, should they become, if we've already maximized our eligibility through this. And again, as I've stated, we are at risk of repayment if it's deemed ineligible in the future, just through our sub-recipient grant agreement with the state of South Dakota. Knowing some of this, there's, you, we have to think about, okay, how would, how would this funding be utilized? So we've already received it in based on eligible expenses, so it becomes part of our unobligated balance. It hasn't been necessarily appropriated or designated for a certain purpose. But we also have to realize a couple of things. One, again, we are at risk for repaying it potentially, so we don't want to get ourselves in a situation where if that were to occur, and it's a significant amount of money, that we would put the, the financial stability of the city of Sioux Falls in jeopardy if that were to occur. So we have to be very careful about how funding would be utilized. And so what we've come up with is, is I, I brought forward kind of some guiding principles, at least in terms of the way that I have been thinking about it, and as finance, we've been thinking about it. How would we look at entertaining different options for utilization of this fund? So, and I've listed these essentially in order of risk. So with the first one being the absolute lowest-risk thing you could possibly do as we get a little bit higher going on. But a couple of things, of things that each, we would not recommend that it would be used for is, first, encumbrances or expenditures to the extent that, as I said, our city's financial position would be negatively impacted to a significant degree if we had to pay back a portion or all of these, this funding that we've received. Secondly, would not recommend any expenditures that would materially increase our ongoing long-term costs or liabilities for the city, because they are not offsetted by anticipated increases in ongoing revenue streams. So, you know, certainly, we've been challenged in terms of some of our ongoing revenue streams. If we are utilizing these funds to essentially incur what will result in much more expenses in the future that aren't supported by an ongoing revenue stream, that, that would create problematic issues for the city. So those are what we would not be recommending utilization of the funds for. In all cases, I believe that any investments or expenditures as they are made from these funds should improve the financial condition of the city, or be deemed to have a high rate of return in terms of the projects or the investments that are made. And again, the investments and expenditures must not materially jeopardize our long-term financial condition if we were in a position where we had to repay it. So in terms of things that we would like to frame the concept of decisions of, of how the funding is utilized, and these, as, again, I tried to order these in risk associated with them. So typically, as the risk goes up, you would hopefully also see your return on investment be higher as well to accommodate the additional risks that you're taking on as a city. Certainly, the simplest thing that you would do is just put the money in the bank, increase your fund balances, and hedge against future revenue losses. So we're still watching the revenues throughout this year as the pandemic continues and what the long-term impact is that. So one could just simply invest it, leverage it against potential revenue shortfalls, and leave it as unobligated balance. So safest thing to do, very low return on investment. I mean, our return on investment is going to be what we can buy treasuries for, but, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to maybe leave some of it in fund balance and, and create some of that hedge. The second thing, and we've had discussions with you about this, is the second probably most low, low-risk, higher rate of return is to pay down existing debt. So we've talked to you, we'll talk a little bit again tonight, about, we're looking at refinancing some bonds as part of our new public safety bond. In, in lieu of doing that, one could pay those down, and that's about $25 million to pay those off. What that will do is it will free up cash in each of the number of the next several years. I'm going to talk a little bit about that, about that now, but it will also reduce your interest rate expenses as well. So our interest rate, obviously, for the bonds that we're paying is higher than what we could get if we were investing the funds into treasuries, so you, you have some gain there. And you also have gain in terms of freed-up cash flow that you were anticipating using, using for debt service in future years. So you have a little bit of a, a higher return on investment. The risk is still minimal, because if we got in a situation where we had to pay back some of the funds, you could go out and borrow the money again. We're no worse for wear from where we were before. Your biggest risk is that you're borrowing at a higher rate than what we were currently or previously borrowing at. So these, these would be your lowest-two-risk items associated with the funds. Next up would be what I'd say is kind of an acceleration viewpoint. So focusing on one-time expenditures that do not increase the overall expenses to the city. So a one-time expenditure, basically, that we had already anticipated making but planned to do sometime in the future, where if we accelerate it now and do it on a timely basis, it's going to create substantial economic opportunity or advance the welfare of the community. So this would be maybe looking at a capital project that we didn't think we would do for another year, but we knew we were going to do it, and we move it up to maybe next year or something of that nature. So again, little bit higher risk, but you have, you do have some risk aversion there, because you've already allocated the funds in a future year. It's just depending if you ever had to pay the money back, whether it was in the year in which you had that project originally allocated. The next one is basically a one-time investments that are not materially significant, and one could define what materially significant is. I, I guess I would say something less than a million dollars. But it's a one-time investment, wasn't necessarily a planned investment, but if you moved forward with it, would create substantial benefits to the community, because it's a timely investment. And, and this is really some of those opportunity areas where you can invest the funds. We're coming out of a pandemic, we're coming into a, an economic slowdown, whereas a, a community with more financial stability than many of our counterparts, if we make an investment, we can do it faster, it's going to have a high rate of return and help us economically return better as a community. And then the last one is a one-time, previously unscheduled, but a more significant investment. So this is something that maybe isn't in the capital program or hadn't been contemplated as, as a, a potential investment, but one where if we make this investment now, it provides a material economic benefit to the community, and helps us recover from a competitive standpoint, from an economic standpoint, coming out of a, the pandemic and the economic recovery that we're in right now. So those were kind of some of the guiding principles that we put forth, under the auspices of always being cognizant of not getting into a situation where if we had to repay the funds, that we couldn't be in a position to do so. So I do want to talk a little bit about repayment of bonds. We are, we do have a bond ordinance tonight. The bond ordinance does not prescribe repaying the, the bonds that we are, we were looking to refinance. It just authorizes refinance. And as I noted last week, it had been our intent to probably come back in October and talk about what repayment of bonds is, so we can have kind of a broader discussion about the funding, the CARES Act, and so forth. So keep in mind, we're looking at about a little over $41 million that would be coming in. If we repaid the bonds, it would be about $25.2 million right now, is, is the, the most recent estimate I had for, if we were to pay those down. And there's actually more than $30 million in bonds, but there's reserves and so forth that will come off that, plus we already have a debt service payment in November. So it's about $25.2 million net. That still leaves about $16.3 million of unobligated fund balance that we would have from this potential funding source that would not be allocated, as well as the cash flow benefits that paying it down would be. I'm starting the conversation with you this afternoon for a couple of reasons. We've had some discussions with our bond investor, or our bond consultant in the most recent week. Assuming that the, the bond ordinance would pass this, this evening, they would like to move forward as quickly as possible in moving the bond to a funding side. The timing being just concerns about the election, and what would happen with the election, and whether that creates some risk or some changes in the bond market that, that might not be advantageous to us. And that's not a political statement from any statement at all. It's just elections sometimes have consequences in terms of how they affect the financial markets. And so if we were able to get it in advance of that, then we might be in a better position to, to garner a, a lower interest rate in a more stable environment, not knowing exactly what would happen after the election. That being said, that does have to make us look at accelerating our timeframe a little bit, and we would, we do need to have some discussions about if this is an opportunity that we do want to pursue, that we'll have to make more of a decision a little bit sooner rather than later. And, and so we may look at bringing forward a request as soon as next week, at least for this initial portion. Now, that doesn't mean we have to do it, but we do want to have the discussions about it, because based on the timing of our schedule, we would start introducing our statement, our statements, our offerings to the, the market later this month, so that they know what's coming. And part of that is, as well as we will change the way we structure that public safety bond depending on whether we pay it down or we refinance it. If we refine, if we refinance it, a lot more of our payments in that public safety bond are going to lean in those last 15 years, because we're going to be focused on paying down the, the pieces that we've already refined, that we're refinancing. If we were to pay it off, that's going to give us an opportunity to utilize some of the freed-up cash flow to actually pay that bond off on a 20-year level amortization, as opposed to an on-level amortization that's pushed out to the last 15 years. And obviously, that creates a little bit more interest expense when you're pushing out a, a bigger piece of those principal payments into those remaining years. So how we structure that bond will be somewhat contingent upon whether we think we're going to refinance or we're going to pay it off. And so I wanted to show, I'm sorry, I'm falling behind a little bit in my slides here, but, so the three bonds that we were looking at either refinancing or paying off were the Quality of Life II Bonds, and then the Flood Control Tax Exempt and the taxable bonds, for a total of about $25.2 million. What that, if those were paid off, it does free up about $32 million over the next nine years as a result of that, in terms of cash flow, and it will save another $8 million over the remaining 11 years of the public safety bond or the 20 years total. So about a $40 million return on a $25 million investment is essentially what you're gaining by paying those down. And as I said, if you do pay them off, we can, we can kind of spread that public safety bond, accelerate its repayment, have it spread over 20 years. And so I wanted to give you kind of a look at what that looks like on an annualized basis. So original debt service is essentially our existing bond schedule plus the new bond, not paying off the existing debt. The revised debt schedule, that's what it would look like if we paid down the existing debt. That would be our, our hypothetical reduced debt schedule. Again, these won't be confirmed until we actually fund the bond and know what our finalized interest rate is there. And then you can kind of see what the net savings are on an annualized basis. So what that does is it frees up, say, 2021, $2.5 million of cash flow in that year that is currently not programmed in the capital program. So that is additional funding for reduced debt service that could be invested in additional projects. And you can see that ramps up particularly in 2026, 27, and 28, where it frees up over $5 million in every year as part of that. So I, I did want to kind of bring that forward a little bit, just so you have an opportunity to be thinking about that. I, I don't want to surprise you by, by kind of bringing this forward a little bit more quickly than we expected, but we are trying to kind of navigate through the environment of just circumstances that are a little bit out of our control. So certainly will be something for further discussion, but I did, I did want to bring that forward. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you have in regarding the funding of the CARES Act.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Director. I guess the, the place I want to start is I appreciate looking out for the city's financial well-being. I mean, that, that's exactly what we're, we're trying to do, but this money was allocated to us, it's, it's in the name of it, that it needs to be a stimulus program, that by taking the money and putting it into savings, or to pay off debt, or to do those things. There's a lot of people in our community that are hurting because of the pandemic, and if we don't invest this in a way that helps those people, we've kind of gone against the intent of what the original money is. So I, I respect the, the safety part of what we're trying to do and free up cash flow, but people are losing their businesses today. The Convention and Visitors Bureau isn't out there doing things today to try to make the pandemic is, at least is tolerable and, and to possibly save businesses, to stimulate the economy, to keep people working, and by us putting it in the bank to put us in a better financial position 10 years from now, it's too late for, for a lot of people. So I hope that, that we continue to balance that and take your advice, but at the same time, really have an eye towards what is going to continue to, to stimulate the economy, to keep people working, to save their businesses. So I think that's a, a big part of it that, that is there. The other that gets confusing for a, a lot of the people that I talk with, you, you talk a lot about the potential of the federal government clawing some of this money back. How we expend it isn't, it's even, I'm not getting it out in exact the way that it isn't, even I'm not getting it out in exact the way that I was thinking, but the police, fire, those expenses is where the potential risk is at, not how once that money is allocated for that, that frees up that other budget money. So how we spend it on the other side, in the other bucket, really allows us to spend it on operating expenses, on capital. It takes that restriction away. So how we end up investing this money, really the risk is on the front end, and you're giving very safe ways to recoup that money. Again, the simplest things from PPE to balancing FEMA reimbursement with this because we'll be able to do that. So it seems very clear to me, and at least very low risk, that we're able to claim these as eligible expenses from the police, fire, health, PPE, and those kind of things. So am I explaining that differently? It's not, I mean, if how we expend it on the backside isn't where the risk is at, it's on the front side of how we make these eligible expenses.
So a couple of things, and I think you make good points. So kind of on your first discussion point, in terms of balance, and I think we can have balance. I think we just have to be cognizant of the risks that are associated with it. I think that it is important to consider ways that would be stimulative, or at least what I deemed is having a high rate of return on investment. Like, we don't want to be spending it on something that is probably not going to have a material impact. And the more ready impact it has, and the more current impact that it has in the short term, not that you don't want to make long-term investments, but we also want to make sure that we're helping people in the short term. And I think you just have to balance it, and having somewhat of a balanced approach to utilizing, because it is a significant amount of money, that it just, you didn't expend it all, and then we get ourselves in a situation where three years from now we have to write a check back to the federal government for 40 million, or we have the state recapturing $40 million of our, literally half of our sales tax revenue in a given year for the general fund. So those, I agree with you. We just have to have a balanced approach and always keep our eye on what the actual return is going to be, asking tough questions about will this investment have a material impact in the short run and not jeopardize our position. In regard to your second question, you're right in respect to the fact that how we kind of, once we've received the funds, the utilization of our money is kind of irrelevant to the CARES Act itself in terms of the audit purposes. The key risk is the interpretation of what we submitted for eligible expenses. And that's where you're already seeing some differing opinions between even within the Department of Treasury itself. And so we're kind of going off of guidance that we think is correct, and we've been told is correct, but ultimately, an auditor can come in and have a different opinion three or four years from now and say, you know, they're not going to look at what we necessarily utilize the money on. What they're looking at is what we drew it down with. And those expenses, if they deem, you know, that we submitted certain payroll, that they deemed wasn't substantially dedicated to fighting the public health epidemic, that's where the problem could be.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you, Sean, for everything that you've invested for time and your staff invested in this, because it's a lot of work to try to understand. I mean, I know I've talked to Counselor Jensen a little bit about when he worked through all this stimulus for his clients. And it's a lot to understand, and then it changes, and then you have to pivot. And you think you're doing it the right way, and then they say, oh, no, you can't do it that way. So thank you for everything that you're investing in this, and really looking at the city as a whole is so important. I think that, you know, for me personally, paying down debt is a stimulus to the economy. You pay down that debt, you have opportunity to free up additional cash to do things immediately. So just because you pay down debt doesn't mean that you're going to sit on a pot of money. It just means we can maybe do some of those other projects throughout the time. And so for me, it's always nice to pay down that debt and not have a huge, huge debt lingering over our heads if things do change. I kind of go back a few years when we had the conversation, and I know I've talked to Counselor Naitzer about this as well, when we had the opportunity to pay down some debt not too long ago. And we had really, a really long conversation on the council as a whole as far as we wanted to say and where that money was going. The former Finance Director, Tracy Turbach, had to pull back a little bit and say, okay, here you guys, I hear you. You don't want to put it all towards that, but you want it. So we did pay down debt. We did pay off a few other things and do a few different projects that we clearly all ran for our offices, knowing that we've got priorities, and we've got things that we want to see happen in our time on the council as well. That benefits the whole community. And so as we have these conversations, leave enough time for that, because I know there's been times in the past when we've talked about the CIP funds of saying, well, this is what we think is the best use. I appreciate that, but I might not agree with that. And so I want to make sure that we have enough time for all counselors to be able to weigh into that and say, hey, it'd sure be nice to do this project. I don't want to say the projects, because I have a few in mind that I would love to see that would be a huge stimulant to the economy. But those are some of the things that we'd like to talk about as well. And so I know that the previous administration was probably a little frustrated with us because we did pump the brakes. And who would have thought that we would pump the brakes on paying off debt? But that's what we did because we wanted to see some other projects. So my ask is, please don't just bring us a list and say, this is what we want to do. It has to be a whole list of whatever that is, because I think that it's enough money in this community that we want to see it impact the best. Not saying that you won't have great ideas. I'm just saying, please make sure that this council is included in it. I think it will be a lot easier process for all. So thanks for everything that you've done with this.
And I would say, you know, like I said, I was hoping we could kind of bring this in October, maybe have more conversation on the totality of the funding. So if it does have to at least have an initial conversation, again, so essentially the transaction, if the council decided it did want to pay down some or all of the debt, what would have to happen is, so when we've taken in the CARES Act funding, it's come into the general fund. So that's the guidance we've received. You need to bring it into the fund in general from where the expense occurred. So most of the expenses that we've had eligible have been within the general fund. If we did PPE, we paid the PPE out of the insurance fund, so that would go, but that would go back in the insurance fund. But it has to go back into the fund where it was the eligible expenses. So we pay debt out of the sales and use tax fund. So the actual mechanism, should the council move down that direction, is that you would have to appropriate a transfer from the general fund to the sales and use tax fund, and then you would have to reappropriate that money out of the sales and use tax fund. It could be done in one ordinance, but it's two kind of transactions. So it gives you a little bit of a piece that that's the council action that would be required to do that. And then, you know, the key thing is, is not the entirety of the funding obviously doesn't have to be decided at one point. So something to think about is, you know, do we want to do some debt repayment now, and then we hold, it is still a significant amount of money, you know, say if there's still $16.5 million left. I mean, that's equivalent to almost 25% of our entire capital program in any given year in that funding. And that's not even considering potentially the freed-up money in the future years from the debt repayment. So something to think about, and we'll kind of walk through that again as we come back forward too. So what I would say is, it would probably be unlikely that we would say, okay, you know, we're going to bring forth all this list of projects right now. It may be, we may have to make a decision on whether we want to do debt repayment now, and then we'll talk going down the road. Because there's no, I guess, sense of urgency other than taking advantage of the opportunities to make investments that are going to help the community.
Can I just follow up?
Please.
I'll just be brief. Yes, and thank you for that, because my father, my parents were just in town over the weekend, and I heard my dad talking to his financial advisor, and he's redoing a bunch of different investments that he has before the election. And so I know that that is very common, and a lot of people do that, that if we know for certain now that this is what it looks like, then do it now just to avoid the uncertainty after that election, so to speak. And so, and I do appreciate your clarification that, you know, we can pay down this, and then the rest, we can make those decisions, but there's not that urgency to make a decision on all of it in the next six weeks. But to do it if we're going to repay the debt.
You can do it in stages.
Do it in stages and do the debt repayment now versus later when it might be riskier.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, when we go into the bond community and we start to put these packages together specifically in advance of the election and quickly, do we get to work with regard to prepayment penalties on those bonds? For an example, let's say we kind of did, we bonded for the entire amount, and then we wanted to prepay and make that decision later in October, like you've talked about. Do you get to have conversations on the prepayment penalties in our bond structuring?
Well, the bonds that we're looking to refund or could refund right now have no prepayment penalties. So in fact, they're already eligible to be repaid right now without penalties. They've been open for several months now and eligible to be prepaid at any time. So there's no magic that it has to be done in November with the November payment. I'll say that. And you don't even have to pay the whole bond off. You could pay a good chunk of it off. There's a lot of options in terms of, and we're talking about three different bonds as well, and so, and they all have different cash flows associated with them. One expires in three years. It's heavy principal right now. The rest are 28 and 29, and so they're, you know, a little bit more amortized. One of them is in almost, almost in an interest-only stage, and then once the taxable portion or the tax-exempt portion of the flood bonds paid off, then the debt service moved over to pay the taxable portion of that bond. So there are different options associated with that, but there's no prepayment penalties. And it would be nice to say, okay, we'll take a little bit of time and figure out if we want to pay them off in January, we want to pay them off in February. Where it gets a little bit more difficult for us is we have a set amount within our debt service for the capital program scheduled for next year. And so whether we pay them off or not is going to depend on how we set the amortization for the public safety bond. That's going to be the key thing, because if we're not going to pay them off, and we're just going to refinance them or refinance a portion of them, then we're not going to do a straight level amortization on the public safety bond. We're going to do more of a shift into the final 15 years of that bond.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just a comment.
Please.
I think in general, just as a good public policy, if we are reducing debt in general, that's a great way to be a steward for your future self in your personal finances, in your business finances, and certainly in the city finances. And by doing this and acting and talking about these things, we are far different than many communities around the country. So I applaud you and your staff and the city and councils that have come before us for doing exactly that. That's why the state of South Dakota is in such a great fiscal position, and it will set us up to do things when others can't. So good work.
And the other piece of it, I know we talked kind of about stimulative effects. You know, obviously, this evening, we're going to be talking about the bond ordinance for $50 million. Certainly, there is going to be a significant stimulative effect of that investment, and an investment that most communities really would not be in a position of moving forward at this point if they weren't in the same financial capacity as the city.
Others, including on the phone? Hearing none. I do have a couple of questions. So one thing that was referenced was whether bonds would be callable. Would you be typically, well, you're going to pay probably, I would assume, a higher rate if you're going to make them callable, potentially?
Typically, they're going to want them only callable in the later years of the bond. And so they want a certain number of years that they're going to get a return on investment, and you negotiate them to be callable in the later years.
And so I assume that that would be a component of this one, and you'd work with bond counsel in terms of what the right number is?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
It depends on what the market is interested in, what generates the most interest from the market.
And to your point, it's not a political statement. It's just reality. Markets don't like uncertainty, period.
Correct.
And so, so the money comes in, if money comes into the general fund, which it's going to here, or it is, you can transfer that to another fund.
Correct.
But is it true that you can only go in that direction? What I mean by that is, could you, could you take funding from the second penny and transfer it over to the general fund, or is it only a one-way?
I think that the state laws used to be that they had to be segregated, and a lot of that has broken down over time and has been a lot more local authority. So like entertainment tax, not so much, because there are specific provisions regarding to that specific tax. But when it comes to the sales and use tax, they become a little bit more generalist. But the city of Sioux Falls has kind of maintained that separation between them in order to maintain balance, to make sure that we're not just pushing everything into the operating side and not doing those long-term investments. So we've kind of stayed with that penny here, penny there, keeps us balanced between our operations and our capital. It would be somewhat unprecedented to transfer money from the general fund to the sales tax fund, but this is a fairly unprecedented ability to be able to have the capacity for this funding on a one-time basis.
And I'm glad you brought up the entertainment tax. Do you believe that you could transfer any of this funding from the general fund to the entertainment tax? As an example, I'm not necessarily advocating for it, but the Washington Pavilion parapet is something that's a big ticket item.
I don't think there's prohibition on transferring money to the entertainment tax. I think there could be issues from transferring it from the entertainment tax to the general fund potentially, just based on what I've read on some of the public guidance on the third penny.
Okay. And then, did I see it right? You're projecting that if we were to pay off those bonds in their entirety, the $25 million, that we would have about $16 million left? That could be...
About $16.5 million left. So we do anticipate, unless guidance changes significantly between now and the end of November, that we will have exceeded our maximum allowance by November. And we would even, you know, look at opportunities where if other communities did not utilize their funding, if there was an ability for us to go and access some additional funding, we would pursue that too. But a lot of that's unknown, and it'll depend on how Congress, you know, reacts in the last months of this year, whether they extend it or not.
But knowing what we know now, even if we pay it off in its entirety, we potentially would have $16 million we could put towards, let's say, shovel-ready projects or whatever we may. Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I go on to the next item, I did want to see if Counselor Starr would like to do committee reports. The first was CCOG, and then the second was the Heritage Museum.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize to the body for being late. It's one of those things that happened during the day. Yes, the Old Courthouse Museum meeting isn't till this week, so we can kind of move that back for next week. But yes, the CCOG Board, Southeastern Council of Governments, did meet this last week. A big part of the discussion was, obviously, the CARES Act is occupying a large part of their time, providing assistance not only to us, but the other communities in the region. Also of note that was quite interesting is housing is a big part of the CCOG program. And I'm not sure if anybody's had the chance to drive by the Old Boys and Girls Club on the east side of town, but that building is no longer. It's been reduced to rubble and taken out, and the program in the neighborhood is starting to understand exactly what's going on and the type of project that it is. Because once the backhoe came out and buildings started to demolish, the number of calls also increased. And so to assure the neighborhood that there's a good plan in place has been a good thing. And again, in the housing category, CCOG does do eight governor's homes in our community each year. CCOG is finishing up those eight for 2020, and they've placed the order with the state for an additional eight governor's homes for 2021. The other thing that was announced at the CCOG board meeting was the 2021-2024 tip, or the Transportation Improvement Plan, which I know Counselor Kylie's updated this in the past with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, but the final approval of that is in place for the next five years. So, and the one other thing that of note was discussion of the census and extending the time for people to get registered, and how important it is for both our community and the communities in our region and the entire country to have a high rate of return. And I did actually see the other day a census worker starting on those house-to-house visits, and the amount of time that takes and how difficult it is. I actually participated as a census worker way back longer than I want to admit, but in 1990. And it's a long process. So if people can take care of it themselves online, it takes just a few minutes, and it's a really simple process to do that saves a ton of time on the backend of trying to follow up with people. So that does complete that part of the report. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to fit this in and be late.
Thank you for giving the reports a little out of order. Next up is Sioux Falls Flood Plan Regulation Update Proposals. This is something we've been waiting with bated breath for Part II. We were left with a cliffhanger last week. It's presented by Albert Schmidt, who is, I'm sure, excited to be here.
Counsel, thanks for having me out this evening. This is Part II. Welcome. So real quick, just want to make, I'll try to make this a little more brief than the last time, as that was the 101. This is the 501, if you will. We're looking at making changes to the ordinance to try to help improve community and the preparedness that those areas have. So if you have any concerns on this, this is the first time I'm bringing it forward to you. So if you have, we're looking at big picture side of it. You have concerns, like we don't think this is the right way to go for this and this, let me know. But just note that ultimately, we're presenting it to you now so we can get your rough ideas and what we like. We'll take it to smaller groups next, and then we'll go to the We'll take it to smaller groups next and then we'll go to the professional groups and then it'll come back to you in a formal ordinance where you can actually really harass me on it. So, starting with that side, the main purpose, the main goal here is to provide ourselves with the tools to protect ourselves. Now, the goals overall here are to make a community more flood resistant and resilient. And also the benefits that we have when we talk about CRS, Community Rating System, is to save lives, property, money and the environment. So when you look at the CRS, the Community Rating System, which is a FEMA program, anticip, or shown to give you points for all the work that you do to try to help prevent flooding and to help be proactive against areas that can flood, they then rank you from low of 10 to high of 1. And so it's a national side of it and those help then go, help you out financially in different areas. So when you look at our region, this is what it looks like for different areas that are CRS communities and counties. And when you look at that, you'll notice that there are six in Nebraska, seven in South Dakota, 10 in Minnesota, 12 in Iowa and 12 in North Dakota. In South Dakota, Rapid City is the highest ranking one at seven. So when we look at what we've done, we've already submitted application, been through that process so far, we're looking at coming in as class eight based on what we're already doing today. And so that would be effective April 1st of 2021. So anybody who has flood insurance would like, we see their flood insurance rates decrease by 10% if they're required to have because their house is in floodplain area after that date. So it's a benefit to all, everybody in there. And so you can see on the very right-hand side, we anticipate that that, based on our numbers, would average out to about $217 a year per flood policy. And total-wise, we anticipate about $13,600 in savings community-wide. And that would, just so you know, from eight to seven, we're about midpoint in that eight. So we need 212 points. So you can see the class eight is 1,000 to 1,500 points. We need 212 more points to get to class seven. So we're about midpoint in that class eight range. And our existing open space preservation policies account for, of our point total, 466 points. And higher regulation standards that we currently have already account for 260 points to get us in that 1,200-point range that we are today. And this kind of is the timeline of CRS. They, you get in, you do a review every three to five years depending on your class and then they come back and check you over and over and you get annual submittals to them. So specifically what we're looking at today is we're looking at trying to have the goal here to protect people for unforeseen changes. This is just an overall view of here, the main changes. When you look at talking about freeboard, we have two-foot freeboard right now, which is I believe the highest one in the state. We want to increase that to three-foot. That's another foot higher. And again, the main goal here is save money. You've seen this image last time. Again, the higher you go, the higher your savings because the less likely are to flood. Then also we're looking at trying to reduce the issues out there to have flood impact during an event. So we're talking about things like getting requirements for temporary storage in the floodplain. We're talking about not reducing and not increasing the dangers for, for floods, excuse me, so hazardous areas. We don't want more chemicals and those things that during a flood event could get in the waterway and go downstream. And then the other side is to better document how a flood would progress on a property when we issue these building permits. So trying to get the known information of 50, 10-year, 50-year, 100-year, 500-years, so these different increments. Now, we only regulate to what we commonly call the 100-year or the 1% annual chance area, but knowing how that water would progress on that property can be a helpful benefit to us and to those property owners as you start mapping out how they're getting from the property, where the parking lot would go, those kinds of things. And the other side of it is putting requirements in there to help us get early information and so we can get better information on earlier side of it to make better decisions. So requiring the stuff that we already acquire later on, just requiring it in advance, which does require some financial input right away, but again, it's something we were going to require anyways. Now, the other side of it is updating the flood permitting side of it. So this is providing for some flexibility for us that we need while we define the actions that we take in more detail here. So keeping it pretty broad there, but one of the biggest things of this proposal change, this map will do a good job of demonstrating the importance of is we're trying to address floodplain early and with development instead of after development or around development. So you look at the southwest or southeast side of Sioux Falls here, you can see the map on the left is our current firm or flood insurance rate map. And then the one on the right is with the newest data that we would be looking to regulate to. You can see there's a ton more floodplain out there with the new data versus the old data. So when a builder comes in, depends on what they want to do. If they want to work with us, we'll help guide them and tell them, here's floodplain we think out here, here's how you should handle that. If they don't want to work with us, they don't have to because we have no regulations. So then after the map becomes effective, like this will in probably four years, then all of a sudden I have to go back to them and say, oh, this house was built just like we did in the southwest side of Sioux Falls and we fixed that issue. Then now all of a sudden there's houses that were built that are in the floodplain because they didn't do unmapping and now the mapping has to be redone. So it ends up costing us or them or the property owners all financial headache, monetary headaches and also our personal headaches of, I can't sell my house. Now what am I going to do? We've seen, it's, we've seen it and it will happen again if we don't try to get ahead of it. So the other side, really big aspect of this is flood capacity. What does this even look like? And so I've taken, took these pictures in 2019 on the left and then here in 2020 on the right. Like in 2020, just so you know, I mean, it's a dry year. 2019 was a very wet year. So, but it does a really good job of showing you the same exact area over off of Louise Avenue, what flood capacity is, how that water is being held back there and where you're seeing that, that capacity. Now, what does that mean onsite when we're talking about requirements and trying to maintain flood capacity? That means if you're going to dig out X amount of feet over here and you're in the floodplain, we need to provide, or if you're going to fill in, like putting a house like in the example in the middle of the brown area, the green areas there you would dig out to help provide that same amount of cubic feet. So let's say one-for-one kind of, kind of switch, teaspoon in, teaspoon out. And so that's kind of the main quick idea on that floodplain side. What's at stake is a very large area. So when you take our planning area, so our joint jurisdictionary, which is outside of our current city boundaries, but in the area we think we're going to grow in the next 30 to 50 years, depending on which area you're in, you're looking at large areas. So just to keep it simple, you're looking at about 4 billion with a B gallons of storage capacity that could be lost if we don't go to protect it at this point now. So that's areas where there's floodplain that could be filled in. And if we regulate to that higher standard and don't allow that fill because we allow that, we say if you have X amount of capacity onsite, you have to still have that. That allows us to then keep that and hopefully retain that so that when we have large rain events, there's a place for that water to go without it being whooshed through really quickly or overflowing in the areas. So the other side of it that we have is substantial improvement, substantial damage. We're looking at taking that down from 50 to 45 and then changing the time period from each event, which is the minimum standard of FEMA, to over a 10-year period. And we would like to try to make that fair for everyone in the community so we wouldn't penalize them for any past information right away. We would say, we're going to start that and if any permit issued after January 1st, in this instance, 2022. So give them a whole year to kind of get ready for it and prep for it. The other side of it here is we would look at increasing our fees. Right now, we charge 50 bucks for a floodplain loan permit. We're raising that to about 75, just so you know, at still around $40 below what it costs us in staff time and, and materials on a general estimated floodplain application. Please note, not everybody pays a floodplain application fee. As we talked in here, decks, sheds, those easy ones, those simple ones where their zoning permits are exempt. So you come in for a $25 deck permit, I'm not going to hit you for a $75 floodplain permit. But we are going to put standards on it, but we're not going to hit you for those costs. Now, the next side is looking at larger subdivisions. We don't have a fee in there for anything more than just single lots. So that would increase if you're doing a larger area to a 250 fee. Again, if you're just doing a single lot, you could still do the 75 fee. The next side affects us in our long-term planning. We view it as a positive input here, but there would be cost to us. So just so you know that, critical infrastructure, critical facilities. We'd be, our goal is to minimize the interference that these have with the normal activities, especially in places that are in demand during an event. So the biggest thing you look at here and it's in the definition here is fire stations, hospitals, things like that. So in a flood event, who's responding to a lot of that? Fire, things like that. So what you don't want to have happen is to have your fire station inundated with water so they can't respond, they're fixing themselves. So the goal here is to get these areas out of the 500-year or 0.2% chance area and require that. There are some exceptions in there depending on where you can go, but that's the goal. Nursing homes, schools, that kind of stuff as defined here. Now, the, talking about work along floodways, again, floodways, we talked about last week and you have memorized by now, is the high-velocity water during a flood event. Trying to minimize this as much as possible is the next goal here. But we want to still provide for the needed stuff that we're going to, we know we're going to have to do. So mainly the biggest things we're looking at are public works projects, bridges, culverts, utilities, things like that. So trying to restrict, but still allow for us as a general public to do the infrastructure projects that nobody else is going to do and that they're going to go to places where we have to get them at times. The other side of it here is if we're going to increase our BFE, when we go up to three-foot, we're going to start to allow then crawl spaces by, in our ordinance, which we don't currently have, so that they could elevate those houses up with the crawl ordinance if they wanted to, or crawl space, excuse me. And this would allow them to elevate that space then up. And we currently permit it, but technically it's not an ordinance. We're trying to fix that right now, storage buildings. We're also adding in the common one now with agriculture storage buildings. We don't have a lot of ag buildings, but it's possible that we could, so we thought we'd include it. And so when you look at this, this would allow for wet floodproofing of these, which we already kind of permit, but technically it's not an ordinance. It's just kind of what we've been doing to help people along, especially homeowners with their back portions of their lots in the floodplain. The idea I'd be here is if you allow that wet floodproofing, the debt, the structure doesn't get damaged during an event and it doesn't float away. So the next steps for you are, you know, if you, tonight, this is talking high level, I want to get an idea of, hey, we really don't like the three-foot freeboard. Don't, don't bring that forward to us. We really, you know, this is okay. The biggest things, like if we don't, storage capacity is an issue for me, just tell me that so we don't bring it forward to community side. That's what we want to talk about tonight and get that right now. But the next step then is four to five weeks, maybe a little longer even, is talk to our other partners out there, go to IRAB, home builders, and then talk to our attorney's office, also Board of Appeals, FEMA, state of South Dakota, the ISO, which is where our CRS program is through. And then get all that comment back, create a final draft, come back for plan commission recommendation, then come back to this group for first and second reading. Ideally for us, in a perfect world, I want to try to get this back to this group December and January, December 2020 or January 2021. That's my ideal timeline and that includes us trying to get information out to citizens who may be affected by this and creating some sort of notification process out there. So that's a really quick summary of a report I anticipated for 30 minutes. Real quick, I'll take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks. Lot of information. Questions? Counselor Erickson?
Okay, I don't know what page it's on, but it says the only firm and then with the newest data and it's the two-side-by-side maps. Yes. Okay, so seeing the one with the newest data on there, how will that impact those folks that currently have homes in those identified areas? Will they now have to pay flood insurance? And then how does that impact those folks that already own that land that maybe didn't anticipate having to build on a floodplain? Because I, I built two homes on a floodplain and they're expensive. And, but I will tell you what, when we had the floods in 2019, every single neighbor had sewage backup because the system failed as well as water in their basements, but mine did not because I had those little pulleys. We, you guys made us jump through hoops years ago and at the time I thought you were crazy, but now I'm grateful because it saved our property and our renters in there. So my question is about the map with the newest data.
Great question. So short answer to you, what we adopt as our regulations shouldn't necessarily dictate what, who will be required to have flood insurance. The bank will dictate that, but this will dictate where our floodplain ordinance will be able to be enforced.
Gotcha. And then on the onsite flood storage capacity map that you had there, that's exactly the way they do it with the wetlands. So if you own property and there's wetlands and you're planning on filling it in, you have to, per acre, per acre, we're going through an issue with some neighbors up at, it's not an issue, but that's what they have to do for a development that they're doing up in Watertown. And so you just have to replenish, I'm assuming that's the exact same thing that you're talking about?
We've left some flexibility in there so that you don't have to be exactly on the one site you're on, but just in the general area. So the idea is if you're doing something on the west side of town, you can't replenish on the east side of town, but you got to be in the general area so it helps that storage capacity there.
Yes, that makes sense. And then on the, the restricting critical facilities?
I think I went too far, sorry. Yes.
There. I'm just being a smart aleck, but I thought it was really funny that the fire danger was really high in that picture with all the water around it. I thought, oh, that's probably time to update that for them. Unless the picture was stolen from Canada because that's where the flag is. Thank you. I'll look through it and provide additional feedback on what I see in there, but that's all I got.
Thank you.
Others? Questions? Not seeing anybody. I think obviously we have a, a very big interest in this community of doing what we can to prevent floods and, and water damage. You know, something that people talk about a lot is you've allowed, whether it's true or not, you've allowed too much development in this area of town and this is the sort of thing that could help to address that. Now, that being said, some of these things could potentially be very expensive and add a lot of cost cumulatively over time. So questions I would have, and you could maybe bring it back, would be if you went from the two-foot to the three-foot freeboard, if you took like every permit that had been issued in the last year or two, if you had gone to that level, how many properties would that have affected? As?
You know, when we talk about what we've done permits for in the past years, again, using 2019, which was a flood year, we have less than you think as far as the buildings in there. I apologize, I have that number down here, but we're talking handful of permits each year that we actually have new construction in there. A vast majority of the ones we're doing now are in our fringe area where we're trying to still do protections because they're close to the floodplain, but not necessarily in the floodplain.
Was this the, in 2019, we had a total of 26 FDP permits?
There you go. That's the, that's the one, yep. So yeah, 56 total issued, but only 13 of them were qualified for, for a fee. So that's the ones that we would typically have these freeboards or anything like that going on if that was.
So even if you went from two to three-foot, it wouldn't necessarily increase this number? It would just, in some cases, they might have to do more?
Yeah, this, that two to three feet wouldn't increase that number at all. It would just increase what they would have to do.
What they would have to do. Okay, so you're not necessarily talking about hundreds of properties suddenly that would have to do something or bring in a foot to fill or?
The only time you're going to change the number of properties in here is the BLE information we talked out with Counselor Erickson's comments is our, our restrictions that are going to go out to those additional areas. But anybody who's already in a floodplain or next to a floodplain, those boundaries shouldn't really change much unless you're near the BLE side of it.
Do you have it scheduled to bring this to the HBA and other organizations?
We're hoping to meet with the Home Builders Association, hopefully this month or at the very latest, early next month. But we're going to try to pair that up with another topic that we have for them too.
Okay.
The only thing I'll, real quick comment on for you guys is if adopted as is right now alone, the two-foot to three-foot freeboard and the comp, comp storage would, I estimate, give us a point increase of 205 points. And again, we need 212 to get to the next class to get five more percent off insurance for people who are required to have flood insurance policies.
Do we have a community rating right now?
Well, I just submitted for it, so that's why we're, we're coming in.
The first time that we're doing this?
Yeah, it's the very first time that we have one and that's April 1st of 2021.
Okay. And then, and when it says with newest data, so as an example, they only, they only change the maps every 10 or what, maybe more years or whatever it may be. And that, so like you said, there, there's a, a long lag where somebody may build and then we all know that in two years they're going to change it and they're going to be in a floodplain. in a floodplain. When it says with newest data, what data are you using? What do you project to use?
It comments to multiple, multiple aspects of the, the biggest thing it does is that BLE data, the base level engineering data that we have obtained, where right now we're in a process with FEMA where that's going to be like four to five years out before that's official firm data. And so we're in that gray area where we know it's going to be floodplain, but it's not technically floodplain. And so this will allow us to use that, but in addition to that, it would allow us to have a developer provide us with a full study of what the floodplain in that area would be and then we could utilize that to help them regulate the floodplain.
So this is FEMA data we'd be using? It's not in the firm yet, but it's...
We can use both, but right now it is FEMA data, the, the main thing, the BLE data, is FEMA data and FEMA modeling that we would be using for a vast majority of stuff.
So they're updating their modeling occasionally and it just isn't in, put into a map for several years?
So right now they're going through a very large project. They're basically doing the whole eastern side of South Dakota, using 2017 LiDAR and updating all the mapping area in that, in that whole region and area. And so we're part of that, we're like phase three of that side of it. They started down south by Yankton, but that's the newest information that we have. But again, but you could utilize privately modeled data to then put into our system and we could accept that and utilize that the way the ordinance could be written.
Okay. And then finally, the updating substantial improvements and substantial damage. So right now, if there's more than 50% damage, if you rebuild, you have to bring it up to today's flood standards. What you're proposing is, is to drop to 45% and it's over 10 years. So as an example, right now you could do, cumulatively, you could keep doing permits and do 20,000 here, 20,000 there, but you could, I guess, get around the substantial improvements. And what you're trying to do here is close that hole, I guess, where you can't do years and years of additions onto, to a structure and suddenly you've now put on two, three times its value?
That's part of it, yeah. The other part is, is if you keep on getting flooded year, every other year, then that's going to add up enough to say, oh, you're getting, you're getting hit too much, you need to get this thing fixed because it's costing you and us a lot of headaches and money.
That, that makes sense for the repeats that they continue to get. Okay, very good. For, for me, I'm going to be very interested in what the stakeholders have to say because I, I really would lean on the people in the field simply because they do it and they'll know like what the financial cost will be and if they have concerns about how it's going to affect homeowners and, and so I'm going to be really interested to hear their feedback. So please get as much as you can.
You know, we look at this and go, and look, a dollar spent today is, as you look at the insurance side of it, $10 saved you tomorrow potentially. So yes, some of this stuff will have direct financial costs associated with it right away, but we believe that a vast majority of them is designed to save the current owner or the future owners a lot of headache and a lot of money.
Good point, good balance. Okay, very good. Last item is bumpback ordinance. That is going to be presented by Counselor Rick Kiley.
Thank you very much. And I think Tom is going to put the ordinance up on the screen. There it is. Back in 2015, the bumpback that had been in place was, was removed. And at that time, I, and I know Counselor Erickson, had supported an amendment that would allow police and fire to still be allowed to bump back. And what I mean by bump back is that any appointed officer, any member that was an employee of the city, appointed by the mayor to a director's position or the chief of police or the chief of fire was allowed to move back to their previous position if the new, a new mayor, for instance, came on board and, and selected somebody else to take their place as director or, or chief. At that time, when we made the amendment, it, it failed in a tiebreaker, so it was closed. But I, I think the rationale that I used then still applies today. And so I, and I believe that it is now is the time to bring that forward again for just police and fire. It would not impact the other directors except for the ones who are basically grandfathered in, as it states, in the ordinance under B. My argument then was that for our chief of police and our fire chief to find a comparable position, if they were forced outside, out of city government, they would have to leave the state. There isn't another comparable position in the state of South Dakota that would hire or that would be comparable to their position within the police department or the fire department. So they'd have to go somewhere else within the region where I rationalize then and I'll, I'll use the same example, our health department or our finance director, it's relatively, it's conceivable that they could find other positions even inside this community of Sioux Falls where you can't do that within police and fire. So the proposal that Counselor Kurt Sale and myself are bringing forward is, is to change the line under B so that it states any appointed officer within fire or police or any other appointed officer holding an appointed office on or before December 31st, 2015, who at the time of his or her appointment thereto was in the service, in the civil service of the city shall upon his or her removal from appointed office be returned to his or her former position and pay as an employee of the city and the period of his or her tenure as an appointed officer shall be included in his or her civil service rights. Now, it's important to point out that this provision does not apply to any appointed officer who has been removed from a appointed office for any reason that would warrant a demotion, suspension, or discharge of any employee who is subject to this chapter. So I think at, at this point in time, I have discussed this, obviously with Chief Burns and Chief Goodroad, as well as discussed this with the mayor and members of his staff too, and are, and it's been received favorably and are in support. And at this point, I'd like to invite the chiefs to step forward and indicate what they feel, how this would impact people below them in terms of their willingness to put their names forward for these positions in the future.
Welcome, Chief Burns.
Thank you, yes, Police Chief Matt Burns. And I, I do thank you Counselor and Counselor Sale for bringing this back up. I think it's very important that we at least talk about this and potentially address this. I will say that our, our department and certainly fire has a long history of promoting from within. And when you do that, you want to be able to send as many of the most qualified names to the mayor via that process that you can so that he, that he or she has the best possible selections. I think by bringing the bumpback back into play for public safety roles, that we actually are allowed to do that and, and, and potentially give them more names. Some of the officers or mid-management that we have currently at the police department have several years left before they're fully eligible to retire. And I know that there is a reticence among them, they've, they've articulated that to me, that without that bumpback, that they in fact have a lot of risk. When, when you hire on with the city as a police officer, as a firefighter, there's, there's kind of a, the deal is that if you put in your years of service via the ordinance, that you will have in due course via, in, in alignment with that ordinance, eligible for a pension. And so that's, that's across the board from every, everyone from the newest officer all the way up to the assistant chief of police, which is now a civil service position. But if you have the acumen, the fire in the belly for the job, and certainly the record of performance to be eligible for the officer chief police, and you raise your hand and say, I'm willing to serve and I want my name put in the hat, I don't think it's fundamentally fair that you, if you're replaced for, on a pure patronage, you know, appointment, that you just lose your pension before you're eligible. It seems fundamentally unfair. This would remedy that and I thank you for bringing it forward.
Very good. Chief Goodroad, welcome.
Chief Goodroad, well, well said, Chief Burns, that's, he covered it pretty well. And we feel the same way in fire. It's really about risk, you know, so they're going to take that risk. When they take their risk and offer the position, if they have a number of years left and they get in that position and it has nothing to do with performance, it simply could be something to do with a new mayor coming in and wanting a new administration. And it's kind of at that whim that, that the risk is there. I don't think we have anybody in our department that would be worried about their own performance being in there. It's simply that, that risk of losing that position and losing some of that pension when that would happen. And to add to his points about, you know, having a strong number of candidates for the position, you know, some will take that risk. I took the risk. And you just, you, you just feel strongly enough about the position and, and your ability to do that, that you just, you take that risk. But then you certainly have individuals that do not. And even though we may have some upper, you know, level management people that would be interested in the position and be very good at it, we certainly have another layer in, in our battalion chiefs that would have maybe 15 years on to 20 years on, on that would be incredible in this position. So this bumpback would just allow that to kind of reduce some of that risk and I think add to those numbers for the mayor to, to choose the best candidate.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Kiley, please continue.
Thank you. And, and to be fair, Chief Burns would not be impacted by this ordinance change because he's already grandfathered in previously. Chief Goodroad could be impacted by this. I mean, in other words, he would be eligible to bump back if for some reason that change were, were made. But again, to wrap it up, because police and fire are such rank and file organizations, it, it makes sense to go this route with the, with the bumpback. And we had entertained, well, why not bring it back for all? So we did have that discussion with the mayor and, and his staff. And it was decided that other departments aren't at the same place that police and fire are currently with developing people from within. And that maybe at a point in time, and we hope so, that we become better at, at, at developing talent and promoting from within in our other departments, that maybe it would be appropriate down the road. But for right now, I want to go forward with what I think should have done, been done back in 2015. So open for any, any questions or discussion.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Erickson?
Sorry, no question, but just thank you for bringing it forward. I know it was an extremely emotional item that just really came along with feeling so defeated to not be able to protect such a unique career field, so to speak. I mean, it's not like you're going to go and do mall security afterwards or you're going to go do other things. It's just so unique that we wanted to make sure back then, and again, I still will support it again, that we want the best pool and we know that there is risk already in your job and that your job is only your job if you do a good job. I mean, you can still be replaced the way it is. You really are serving at the pleasure of the mayor with advising consent of the council, but it's such a unique role with skillset. Back then, I supported it and I will support it again and I appreciate you bringing it forward, Counselor Sale and Kylie. So thank you.
Others? Including on the phone? Counselor Kiley?
To close then, this, the intention is for the first reading to take place next week on the 15th with the second reading on the 22nd. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And if, if it'd be okay, I do actually have a question and a comment. The first question is, did we, I, I believe the assistant police chief was appointive at one point? Did that change in the last couple of years?
Yes, not long after Mayor Tenhaken assumed office, I went to him and requesting, or at least floating the idea that we make that into a civil service position for a variety of reasons, not entirely unconnected to this. If a new mayor would come in, you could virtually decapitate the entire senior leadership of the department in one fell swoop on a pure patronage play. And I just felt that for a consistency, continuity of operations, that it was better, better served to have that broken up and he agreed.
Okay, very good. And then the other question, and whether you want to take it or Kylie, Counselor Kylie, could somebody reminds me, remind me, if bumpback occurs, for example, if somebody had been assistant police chief civil service and then they moved up to police chief and then for whatever reason they bump back, assistant police chief has now been filled. What happens to the person who's currently assistant police chief? That's just an example. I mean, I'm not trying to just call out police, but just, yeah.
So in that particular instance, you would have to go back to, as the ordinance reads now, your prior civil service level. So there would have to be an additional spot created to, to fulfill that role per ordinance, would not be in another assistant chief. You could call that a variety of different things and certainly have those, that person gainfully employed. There's, trust me, there's plenty of work to do, but that would be something that you would have to address.
Okay, very good. And, and I, I do want to state that as a citizen, when I was watching this, I was very torn on this issue and I, and I was really actually, from the little I, I knew as a citizen, I was very disappointed that this amendment didn't pass because it made a lot of sense and so I'm enthusiastic to support it. And so this particular ordinance, I, I will, because I think it's a very, very good point that it's such a unique position. And I was going to ask you, why not everybody else, but I think you've addressed it very well, that the time may come, but maybe now is not the right time.
Well, we, we had considered that. In fact, Chief Goodroad had even considered that. What would be the effect if we do it just for us and not for the other departments? How would that impact morale? So that's why we felt that it was necessary to discuss that. And, and I think we've reached that a good point. So I'm, I'm not saying that'll never be on the table, it, it may possibly be, but for, for now, we'll limit it to police and fire. And I just have one correction, the second reading is going to be October 6th, not the 22nd of September.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. It looks like brings us to the end of our agenda. Last up is public comment. Anybody who wants to comment on anything we've talked about today, up to five minutes, welcome to do so. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.